Good evening, everyone. Tonight, obviously, is the Town Council Special Meeting, Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. Jane can't? Is this not -- is this working? Nobody can? That's just for them. All right, so I gotta yell. So Town Council Special Meeting, Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, at 6:00 PM, Town Hall Auditorium. So the first thing, we will call the budget hearing to order. And I just want to quickly say, we'll just kind of go over kind of how we'll just operate the whole thing. Obviously, as a public hear -- hello? Jeez.
Oh, now you got it.
That's too loud. Just so everybody knows, everybody who signed the list, they want to come up and talk. Obviously, we'll give everybody a little bit of time to speak and, you know, to bring forth their opinions on the budget. There'll be no questioning and answering, so the council, we're just here to listen. So don't feel like we're not asking questions because we're not interested. We just -- that's how the public hearing will work. You guys speak, we'll just sit here and take in these comments, and then after the budget hearing is over, then we will get together as a council. It's still an open document, it's still a moving document, there still are changes that can be made. What we put forth, the numbers that we originally put forth were for a public hearing, not for the final budget numbers. So anything that you guys bring forth tonight, anything that we discuss, and then make any adjustments to the final numbers, is what would be brought forth to the referendum in May. Just so everybody knows kind of how the dates are going to work on that. So I know there's been a lot of talk, there's been a lot of things going on. I was always told if it's on the internet, it's true, but I guess if it's on social media, it's not true. So we're gonna listen to everybody talk. And again, we appreciate everybody coming forth, and just understand that there will be changes that can be made based upon some updated figures that the town's also received. Because there are things that the town estimates for in the current budget, that once we get the final numbers, which normally takes until April sometimes to get those numbers, we will adjust the budget as well. And that'd be on town side, Board of Ed side, it'll be all over. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that as well.
Are you gonna say anything about the $150,000?
Not right now, no. We're just gonna let them talk. All right, so who has the list? Tom, does the list down there?
What's that? Oh, you got tools.
Taking names. Taking names. Okay. Ooh. Okay, Katie McCollum. I'm gonna put that over there. There's one over there, too? Okay.
No, no, that's it.
That's the one?
No, I just took this for that.
Oh, okay.
Katie.
Good evening. I stand before you as the life attendant president, graduate of public schools, and mother of three students in the public school system. However, I also stand before you as a concerned educator. I bear witness daily to the way educators are forced to perpetually do more with less. We are at our breaking point. The demands in our system cannot be met under your current proposed budget. What most citizens don't realize is that the majority of the budget is contractual: salaries, insurance, coverage for teachers. Additionally, we are obligated by law to provide service to special needs population. Cutting the education budget in such an extreme way impacts the quality of our education. Surely, it will reduce personnel and tapes from the little left of the budget for teaching materials. Teachers are leaving this profession at an alarming rate. Cuts like this one impact our ability to attract teachers and professionals. It sends the message that we do not support our educators or our young citizens. The effect of this way of disregard for our youth ultimately harms our real estate values as well. No family wants to move to a town that does not provide a quality education. We are already suffering from declining school numbers and an aging population. As a community, we need to attract new families, grow our town, and invest in education. Statistically, education is the most effective way to improve a community and strengthen it for the future. I call upon you, the elected officials of our town, to do what is best for our town, best for our families, best for our children, and best for the future of Clinton. Please reinstate the budget cuts that you have proposed, which I am told will be approximately $200,000, and send a message that Clinton values its education, its families, and its plans for the future. Kristin Cafferty, 70 River Road. As we are all aware, learning and social-emotional needs continue to increase due to the variety of factors. According to the Board of Education, needs have increased about 10% over the last two years. As I hope you are aware, 504s and IUPs fall under the School Counseling, previously known as Guidance. School counselors just don't help students press buttons against colleges. School counselors do significant prep work for 504s, IUP meetings, which occur twice a year for each of those students. In addition to the school counselor, teachers, social workers, special education administrator, and principal participate. Social workers and administrative staff are critical to ensure both our children's academic success and mental wellbeing. I am also--
--big educator. We need to show Clinton and all that want to join our town that we care about our kids, we care about our teachers and their staff. I respectfully request the Town Council to reinstate the $200,000 to the education
Sandy?
Yep, absolutely right. Thank you.
Good evening. Oops. I have a good voice. Good evening, my name is Sandy Bogaki, and I live at 107 Combeville Road. I am here to address the Board of Education budget and the decision to deduct funds from that presented budget. I stand here as a representative of the paraprofessionals here tonight and many others. I have decided to speak because you need to know that paraprofessionals in our district are compassionate, intelligent, caring professionals who don't make a living wage. Currently, our entry-level wage is $15.26 an hour. The current minimum in Connecticut is $14 an hour, and when this budget is activated, the minimum wage will be $15 in Connecticut. This does not put value on our profession as a whole. As part of our calling, we work, and I mean work, to meet the cognitive, social, emotional, and medical needs of our students, the heart of our town. Paraeducators play a critical role in providing students with access to curriculum, which, by the way, is the law. By reducing money from the proposed budget, it is very concerning to think that the people who care for our students may not be provided a living wage. Furthermore, over the past year, it has taken months to fill paraprofessional positions-- tongue twister. Why, you ask? Take a look at the pay scale and the scope of work we do. I am proud of the work I do and my college students--[518.12][518.12](APPLAUSE)-- to serve the students of Clinton and give them the dignity and respect they deserve in their learning environments. We work side by side with our community's children, giving personalized instruction and care, all while earning very little for our service. Please consider reallocating money to the Board of Education budget to ensure that our endeavors to serve the community of Clinton and, most importantly, our future of Clinton, and to address and guide the process of affording paraprofessionals a living wage.
Hello, council. I've been asked to read a letter on behalf of a Clinton resident that is not able to attend tonight. And it goes like this. "Dear members of the Town Council, I find myself repeating comments I have made in the past regarding the education budget. I strongly disagree with the cutting proposed budget by an additional $350,000. I now have spent three years in the Joel School System as a substitute teacher. Each year, I've seen the diversity of language barriers increase. Students are here from Caribbean, Central, and South America. In many cases, these are children that need to learn the English language. All you need to do is come to the school and see for yourself the devastation that COVID has left. Students are suffering in math, reading, and writing. Now is not the time to be cutting the education budget. If we wanted to treat our children the way we should, we need actually more teachers and special teachers. That I don't expect to happen. But certainly, don't cut the budget.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Mary Martinez, and I live at 91 Commerce Street, in a house that my husband and I owned for 20 years. I am a lifelong educator, having served as superintendent in two urban districts, associate superintendent of education on the state level, assistant superintendent here in town, director of special ed, a building administrator, and a teacher. I think it's suffice to say I know education. I realize the proposed budgets are still works in progress, but I'm curious about the imbalance. The town budget shows a 7.14 increase and the Board of Education a 2.07 increase. It is my understanding the Board of Ed increase is well within the guidelines that the Town Council had requested when the two boards met. As for the harder news, the town manager was quoted as saying, "If passed as is, the tax rate would increase by 0.48%." He went on to explain the reasons for the increases. All that might be true, but why are you talking about tax increases when there is currently a $7.78 million in reserve? Even if the two budgets were to pass as is, there would still be $5 million in reserve. Why? What that says to me is that you are overtaxing the citizens of Clinton, and I'm not sure why. When young families decide where to build their first home, or the community in which they want to become a part, the first thing they look at are the schools. Do schools form the type of community they want their children to be a part of? They examine academic standing and achievement, teacher-student ratio, course offerings, including AP and accelerated courses, extracurricular activities, high school completion rates, along with college acceptance rates, just to name a few. Ultimately, the question -- oh, parents are also looking for diversity and respect for diversity. So in case Town Council members are aware, tonight is Passover, the holiest day in the Jewish calendar. Are we going to schedule meetings on Christmas? That's just a sign of disrespect. Ultimately, the question is whether Clinton students who graduate from Morgan can compete with other students statewide, nationally, and on the global stage. Therefore, $200,000 must be restored to the Board of Education budget tonight. If we don't invest in our schools, both staff and programs, along with physical facilities, we will be doing a grave disservice to the community and the quality of life we currently have. Remember, you, the Town Council, you do not operate in a vacuum. Just as you deliberate on the budgets, so do the voters deliberate on selecting people who represent them and their priorities at the next election.
Is that this Gail Athgar?
Hi, Gail Athgar, I live at 31 Clement Road. How are you? Clinton cares. We are here for you. So reads the billboard as you venture into Connecticut. "Facing suicide attempts in community, Clinton holds meeting on suicide prevention," states the press release in September of 2020 -- 2022, sorry, on Channel 8. "Clinton community conversations supported by Clinton Community Services, the PTA, Family Helping Families, offer training and QPR to assist in the prevention of suicide." One concludes that Clinton must be the kind and caring community. And in truth, there are many people who give everything they have for our community, our children, and our future. Teachers and administrators, superintendents, and all of our support staff want the best for our children. They give their best for our children. They have been through the darkest trials of the pandemic, continually endeavoring to address our children's intellectual, psychological, and emotional needs. What message is the Town Council giving our community, our Board of Ed, our superintendents, our teachers, most importantly, our children, when they refuse to support our needs? The message that you are stating is loud and clear. You don't support our children's intellectual, psychological, and emotional needs. Actions speak louder than words.[1074.12][1074.12](APPLAUSE)
Allison, please.
Okay. Hello. So I have a bunch of questions in here. Obviously, there's no dialogue, so just go with me. If we are going to reinstate the $350,000, I guess it's $250,000 now, is that what I heard? Is it going to anything us as parents want or need? I would like it to be a public parent vote. I see there was cuts in the academic school programs at Joel. We already cut four to five teachers. Elliott now is going to, or dropping teams and going to individuals. Is that going to be more workload for teachers? We have an athletic director now having to teach classes, only 10 students or lessons in that class. Is that needed? There are numerous areas I can see cut, but please don't cut our teachers. Another example, a guidance counselor is leaving the high school. Does that mean we are hiring a fourth counselor, even though numbers are declining, like you said? Again, I am all for mental health, just ask me out loud when the decline of numbers. There is no more DARA programs, I haven't seen those in years. I see three assistants shown on the websites for a superintendent. Again, is that needed? Safety is the top of parents' lists. Obviously, these are just a few areas I would like to see reviewed for possible cuts, but ultimately, I would like to reinstate the $250,000 and leave it to parents public to vote where they see fit. Do not cut the educational budget. Please don't cut any more teachers.[1181.12][1181.12](APPLAUSE)
Karen Gosling.
Hi, everyone, I'm Karen Gosling, and I live at 152 Woodwood Road. I have three children who are supported by the district currently, one in Elliott and one in Joel. I'm sorry, I'm really tired. Do you want to know why I'm really tired? I'm really tired because I have to spend hours of my day transporting my son to another school because we are so underfunded at this point that the schools cannot support the needs of my special-need child. I've spent literally hours a day doing this. That's why I couldn't prepare a speech. We have been historically underfunded for over a decade. We had a gentleman, if I can recall by that name, who led a no campaign for years and basically divided the town against senior citizens versus our children. And you know what that gentleman did? He saved a ton of money by keeping our taxes low, and now he moved away. And we have no senior center, and we have not enough funding for our students. And this has to stop. The trick, it really is a trick that those of you on this council are playing, saying that, "Oh, there's a $500,000 surplus this year." Where did that surplus come from? It came from the incredibly hard work that our superintendents and our staff do to be transparent and to be as fiscally responsible as possible. The reason why there's a surplus is because of circumstances. You know, we had more teachers go on long-term leave, and so we hired long-term substitutes, and that saved us money. We had fewer people who had high needs in the health insurance program. What happens next year when those teachers come back from leave and we have to pay full salaries again? What happens, and maybe they were on maternity leave? The insurance goes up because we have to insure more people, right? The first thing that I've heard the last few times we've brought the education budget to a vote that comes out of the map of the Town Council is, "This is a good, fiscally conservative budget." And that was said at the meeting before the suggestion that we cut the $350,000. We're requesting we put back $200,000 because we know, again, the superintendent of schools and the Board of Education are being fiscally responsible. There's going to be probably some savings in the insurance from this year. That's why we're only asking for $200,000. But the lived reality that everyone's been speaking about, our paraprofessionals, I pay my babysitter more than we pay our paraprofessionals. We should be ashamed of us. But in fact, I mean, I know my paraprofessionals that support my special needs, that have supported my special needs student by first name. My kids hug them because they are so important in their education, right? This is just, this isn't just a one-year problem. This is a long-term problem. And you know what? We're canceling IUP courses, not because students aren't interested in taking them, because they are too poorly prepared to score well on them. I've been looking at the high school because I've been trying to say, "Can my son come back to this high school?" Not being able to be supported currently. And the answer is no. We don't have enough resources. As it stands, even with the budget increase that everyone agreed at the Town meeting before the proposal for the decrease, right? Like, we really were at our limit. I also want to say to the parents out here, I agree with the last speaker. We are not doing a good enough job of oversight of the budget. We really do need to argue for what we need. What we need are tutors for students to make up for COVID learning loss. If New Haven, which is entirely Title I schools, can come up with a program in the summer to make up for COVID learning loss, why can't we? Why can't we fund the YMC program we had a couple of years ago that was grant funding that did amazing work for our ELL learners, our special needs kids, and our kids who needed more social and academic support over the summer? The parents and the kids raved about that program. I saw significant gains in my daughter who went through that program, and yet, nothing, right? The grant was over, we couldn't support it. We are losing 11 teachers this year. Four of them are being sunsetted because we got the grant proposal to do innovative work. And it's worked, but we can't get the town to fund it beyond the grant time. And then we lose these great opportunities. You know, I've come here nearly every year since my kids started school in support of the schools, and every year I've gotten more and more frustrated, as you can hear in my voice. And it's time for this to change. And I do hope that the parents actually will finally get together and have some more input and oversight into the budget and show our elected leaders that attend what we really want for our kids.
Suzie?
Good evening. My name is Chenzia Lutere. As a Clinton resident, mother, and educator, I am shocked at the proposed cut to the budget for the Board of Education by $350,000. The timing and callousness of the cut runs counter to what the Clinton public school system needs and their students deserve. The Board of Education presented a budget that was not only in step with neighboring districts and districts with comparable student populations and demographics, but within the Town Council's own request of a 2.5% increase. Your own request. Nice. Neighboring shoreline councils supporting education budgets in some instances doubling back of Clinton's. Let's talk about our neighbors. Madison has proposed a 2.65% budget increase for their Board of Ed. Guilford, 4.78%. Old St. Edward, 4.9%. And Kellyworth, a 6.7% increase in their education budget. Clinton's Board of Education's proposed budget increase of 2.5% was unanimously approved by the Board of Education. This Town Council's members then slashed that down to 2%, ensuring that Clinton's school district could not keep pace with inflation, let alone stem the damage caused by the pandemic. And yet, the Town Council had no issue passing a town budget with a 7.14% increase, equalling an additional $1,561,443 price tag, only to deny its educational system the same investment. If the current budget passes, the town of Clinton sits on $5.5 million surplus in unassigned for what we call rainy day funds. Let's be clear. This town's educational system is not seeing the clouds on the distant horizon. We're in the storm. As it stands, Clinton Public Schools -- as it stands, Clinton Public Schools rank in the bottom 50% of schools in the state of Connecticut, while towns like Madison -- nobody wants to talk about Madison, why would we? They're putting us to shame. Towns like Madison, Guilford, and East Lime rank in the top 20. We are surpassed by schools on the shoreline in almost every regard. According to Ed State Data, the percentage of students in the district who reach proficiency on the map, Smarter Balance's assessment dropped about 13.5% from the 2018-2019 school year to 2021-2022 school year. And the percentage of students who reach proficiency in ELA dropped about 17% at Jared Elliott. 17% less students who reached proficiency in reading. Think about that. While Joel-- While Joel showed no growth at all, our youngest, our littles, our loves showed no growth at all. Great Schools, the leading nonprofit providing national information on US PK through 12 school systems, details that our youngest and most vulnerable students at Joel are feeling the harshest effects and making less academic progress given where they were last year compared to similar students in the state. And while the test scores for Joel are about the same as the state average, they are still below the top performing schools in the state. Yet, our elected officials of the town council deny our schools the funding that they so desperately need. It is very apparent to the residents of this town and to those who have school-aged children that certain elected members of the town council are tone deaf to the educational needs of its children and this town's future. I am strongly urging the Clinton Town Council to reconsider their Board of Education budget cuts and to give Clinton Public Schools districts the respect and the resources they are worthy of, worthy of. Now, for the members of the town council who do not grow up here or choose to not send their children here or didn't raise their children here, I'd like to share a little town background with you. In the Clinton public school system, we start off as little tadpoles and frogs at Joel. But don't ever forget that we grow to become fierce and protective Morgan Huskies. If you come after our children's futures, we will come after your seats. If you don't vote to give our budget of $200,000 back, we will vote you out. Hank Teske, fund our schools. Dennis Jonathan, fund our schools. Carol Walter, fund our schools. Carl Tull, fund our schools. And Tom Hollander, fund our schools. Fund our schools! Fund our schools!
Amy Lee.
I'm Amy Lee. My husband and I both grew up here in Clinton and we moved back here from the state of New York specifically to raise our children where we grew up so they could go to the schools that we went to. I am in the unique position of having volunteered and been employed at Joel, Pearson, and Elliott up until March of 2020. So even before the pandemic, I could see that there were a lot of unfilled, you know, staff shortages and already kids' needs weren't being completely met and already staff was underpaid, specifically paras. And it also becomes a safety issue because one of our own children recently was in a position at school where there were no staff around when the children were in a big line. And the staff shortages become a safety issue when students are left unsupervised in big groups like that. And those shortages will continue if money is also cut because they're already not paid enough. There's not enough substitute teachers. Nobody wants to substitute teach for a wage that they can't live on. And open parole positions aren't going to be filled because nobody can live on 15, 26 an hour. So, you know, this is not what my husband and I had envisioned when we moved back to our hometown and put our kids into the school system that we grew up in. I do urge you to reallocate that money back to the budget. And something else that I would like to address is our students have all had the luxury of being able to eat free meals at school since the pandemic started. And I know that that has been funded through the state, but that's something to consider trying to look for grants and keep that going because I don't know if anybody else saw that huge line for the food pantry when they were coming to this, yeah, to this meeting. I'm not even talking about for my own family, but everybody must be aware of the population of families we have here that already are eligible for free lunch. Like, we are a town that really needs to continue to feed our children at school because that is also a safety and health issue. Somebody else had mentioned suicide rates and things like that. If you can't feed your kids and you're waiting in line for three hours once a week to try to stretch your budget, we need to keep that in our schools somehow as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erica Gelman and I'm the Chair of the Clinton Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to address the town council regarding the board's approved operating budget, the result of many months of diligent and difficult work. I would like to publicly acknowledge the professional collegial work done by each member in the vetting and shaping of this budget. The members did their research, asked challenging questions, and made difficult decisions to ensure the budget reflects what is necessary to provide integral programming as identified by administrators, teachers, parents, students, and other stakeholders. We have all honored and exemplified the mission of the Clinton Public Schools, empowering learners to embrace and influence the future with courage and compassion. Our work over the last year, vegetarian otherwise, was largely guided by two overarching questions. Number one, are we maximizing efficiencies in the utilization of our resources? And number two, are we staffed appropriately, given the realities of education and enrollment, not just today, but in the years to come? The unanimously approved Board of Education budget reflects solid and well-supported answers to these questions. The board has developed and approved a budget that acknowledges and mitigates the great inflationary pressures we are experiencing while prudently and powerfully funding the strategic priorities of the district. Considering our diligence and determination, members of the Board of Education were disappointed by the town council's action on March 8th to cut $350,000 from our operating budget. Our board membership respects and appreciates the roles and responsibilities of the Clinton Town Council and is always and confident they will look forward to the opportunity and responsibility to work collaboratively with you, acting in the best interest of the taxpayers of Clinton. To that end, mirroring the sentiment of the Board of Education, I respectfully and strongly request that you reinstate the $350,000 to the Clinton Board of Education operating budget. Thank you.
My name is Peter. I'm 14 Stonewall Lane. I'm a member of the Board of Education. I've had four children go through the public schools here and we've lived here for over 20 years. This is a wonderful thing and I don't want to grandstand, but I sincerely appreciate people who are willing to come out and voice their opinions in public to our elected officials. When I joined the Board of Education, when we got involved in public schools and some of the battles that we fought over time, budgets were padded. And I've had discussions with the members of my party about how they were padded and then they would refail. They would fail these budgets. But there'd always be room to cut a little bit in the margin because of that padding. But one of my firm beliefs on the Board of Education was to ensure that there was a budget. That was honest. And I swear in attendance for credit, I might have been her biggest critic in a lot of areas, but she will do what she's told by the Board of Ed. So when we asked for a very heroin budget, that's what we got. And when we're given a target by the town council, we intended to hit it. So once you hit that target, and in order to hit that target, you have to make a motion and approve cutting double-digit number of individuals. I don't know if any of you want that at your resume, but what happened the other night, it was like a wake. So I encourage you to attend those meetings too, to see what we had to do to get to 2%, 2.5% or to your target. Imagine if that happened in any other department or any other town area where you had to cut that many people as a percentage and the reaction that would take place with that. So what I'm asking is that you trust us with this brutal work to get it to where you wanted it and ask that you, the town council reconsider your recent decision to reduce the Board of Ed budget by $350,000. Thank you so much for this.
First, I wanted to thank the Board of Education for proposing a fiscally responsible budget and also to the town council for weighing the needs of everybody in the community, seniors that in today's environment, with inflationary costs and costs on seniors and other members of our community, that they want to make a fiscally responsible decision on this budget too. You know, in other years, cutting the proposed budget would make sense and today's environment, it doesn't. So looking at salary and benefits, which is about 70% of the budget, you know, those are fixed costs. We can't touch that. So we're looking at 22% where you can look at the line item. So I sought out as I was looking through the budget, which line item could be cut more. And after going through every line item with the information I had, I couldn't say that I was able to find a line item to make another cut. If you look at the total amount of almost $8 million, if you cut that by 3%, that would cover the $200,000. Again, I'm not sure that's practical in today's environment. Other numbers did stand out and one of those numbers is the declining number of students at the different levels. So at Elliott School, the projected numbers are to be minus nine students. At the high school, you're looking at minus 58. So maybe there was some justification there for making some cuts. But where the cuts would be made, you know, doesn't make the most sense. So I'm looking at class size. You look at third grade, you could have a big lasting impact on education and the class size is 20. And that's the largest in the district, larger classes than the high school where high school students are supposed to be independent learners, but where kids need the most help, they have the largest class sizes. And fourth grade and eighth grade and the other two places with the largest class sizes. Think about the impact that can be made of those class sizes. We're small. Looking at where the staffing cuts would be, you know, we're losing English Language Arts teacher at Elliott, math, science, social studies, you know, those are the poor academic areas. If kids are struggling in their poor academic areas without getting the help that they need, how's that going to affect their mental health? You know, looking at the number of guidance counselors in the district, that's one per 116. Wow. Reading intervention, no, math intervention. There's a wonderful teacher. She spends half of her time at Joel and half of her time at Elliott, two halftime positions. If you want to make a lasting impact down the line that affects students all the way through high school, those should be two full-time positions. So even in the proposed budgets, even in the proposed budget for the $350,000 cut, that this was a thin budget. Where could other staffing cuts be made? I don't know. I believe in clean schools, but you know, we had 20.5 custodians when we had four schools. Now we have 19. I just, I'm looking through this, I just don't see where more cuts can be made. So with $200,000, you know, I asked you, go through this line item by line item. Where are you going to make those additional cuts? I just can't see it in another year or if a budget was proposed to you that was loaded, I would 100% support saying, cut it, Board of Ed, figure it out, but that's just not the issue.
Beverly Bowman?
Did you call someone's name?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Bowman. I reside at 35 Silver Birch Lane in town. I've been employed in Clinton by Clinton Public Schools since 1990. I've had the opportunity to work with generations of families over the past decades. I'm a speech therapist, a speech and language pathologist. And I have witnessed many, many changes in the needs of our children. Specifically, since the pandemic, the needs of our students and their families have increased. I'm in the homeroom each morning, I'm a homeroom helper, where the food insecure students come to me each day. I don't have to go to them. They come to me. They've already had breakfast and they come to me to make sure that I know that they want lunch. We talk about feeding our students. Well, it goes beyond food. I witnessed the dire needs of our students experiencing mental health needs. Our students who require small group instruction has grown as well. In order to know what is really happening on a day-to-day basis in our schools, you have to be there. Our administrators know what is happening because I see them walk through our schools. My administrators man the bathrooms to make sure students are not misbehaving there. Our administrators come and cover classes so teachers can have their prep time. Our administrators know what is happening. If you're not in the school, you really don't know. I want to commend the Board of Education and the administration for the diligence and their efforts in putting forth the fiscally responsible budget this year. What our community needs to understand is that a large part of the budget, especially in the area of specialization, that's federally mandated. There's a lot of givings that can't be changed. There's no debate here. No cuts can be made, our teachers, our administrators, our custodial staff even. Our custodial staff is not, they're not well-staffed. Our paraprofessionals. I'm advocating for no budget cuts and that money previously removed from the budget be reinstated. Thank you.
Valerie, 14 Stonewall Lane. I'm here to ask you to please reinstate the $350,000 Board of Ed budget reduction taken from the meeting of RG. I watched that meeting to determine what justification you had for that cut and it seems that you had two. The first one was they expect to have a surplus this year. Well, surpluses are not guaranteed. This is just not a sound, depending on that surplus is not a sound financial strategy. In fact, much of your discussion surrounding surrounding use of the town's fund balance acknowledged that very fact by all of you and was the reason for conservatively spending the fund balance. You said, "We can't see into the future." How are we supposed to know how much to spend out of this fund balance? Why do you impose a different set of standards on the Board of Ed? The second justification, oh, back to surplus. That strategy also brings us closer to realizing budget deficits. The Board of Ed gives that surplus back, and it's what contributes to the fund balance that allows us to sometimes reduce the tax burden. Less than 2% is not a large surplus. There's no incentive for the Board of Ed to over-budget because it all comes back to you. The second reason given was, "Well, you're still getting more than you got last year, so you shouldn't have to make any cuts to accommodate this." This statement ignores one very obvious thing: inflation. All of the proposed budgets from our surrounding towns are significantly higher than ours. Why? Inflation. The Board of Ed and the superintendent are doing the best they can within the constraints that you gave them. We're hearing a lot of complaints here about the schools. You guys may think that this, that it's the wrong audience, that you can't do anything about it, but that's not true. I'm pretty sure the buck starts and stops with you guys because you told them what they're talking about. So you shouldn't be hearing what the complaints are because it sounds to me like they want more money. But anyway, there are things that they legally have to do. There are inflationary pressures. They are not immune to utilities, waste removal, and transportation. All of those inflationary pressures that you recognize as a factor on the town side, considering the increase there. So that's the business side of things, and I hope that convinces you to reinstate the funds. But the cost of people, the largest and most valuable component of the budget is where it gets emotional. And if you think this topic should not get emotional, then you're not watching the news. We will not keep emotions out of what is happening, nor should we. Our demand for campus safety is emotional. Our demand for funding to give teachers and administrators raises is emotional. They are, they, teachers, kids, and administrators, they're being killed in our schools. That's emotional. Don't tell them that they shouldn't have to be emotional. They are putting themselves on the front lines of a mental health battle that, and this is done with emotion. Do we tell teachers, day after day, if they have a day where there's a lockdown drill, or worse, where it's not even a drill, to not get emotional? Do we tell administrators, who's, and this happened, whose face happened to intercept a punch during a school fight, to not get emotional? Please stop saying that we don't need administrators. Teachers need administrators so they can take care of everything else and allow the teachers to teach. They have state mandates, legal cases, human resources issues, budgets. They're directing traffic. They're in the cafeteria. Who do you think handles all this stuff? And you think ours are overpaid? Please look it up. The average superintendent salary in Connecticut is over $200,000. We want to give teachers a 2% raise, and the Town Council is giving a budget increase that is less than that. So yes, something must be cut. Or we can actually start passing budgets. And now I look to the audience. It seems as some of the chatter indicates that you don't like the fact that staffing reductions were taken in order to meet what they thought was the Town Council's directive of 2.5%. But if you don't like that, then start by passing the budget on May 8. Mary Ann has worked in a world for years where our budgets consistently fail. But there is a world, Old St. Brook, Westbrook, Old Line, where budgets pass with flying colors the first time because the people show up and they support education. Because when a budget fails, it goes back to being a business transaction, and they can only be cut more. And there's, I've always said, there's no why at the ballot box. You don't get to decide where the cuts were made, nor should you, because there's a group charged with ensuring that they're done in a way that's equitable and that provides the best possible education and safety for all our kids while meeting their financial and legal constraints. And by the way, the superintendent position is legally required. But the alternative is to participate in the process well ahead of time. Have your input and then prove to the board that their budget will be supported. Whatever they put forward, tell them it will be supported by the community because that's where the why happens. There are, there is plenty of opportunities for discussion and input, but it takes time and effort. Which is why it was so emotional to hear the town committee just randomly cut $350,000, even after the board met their directive and ended the meeting with the statement, "Now let the voters decide." Well, that was the wrong order. You took $350,000 out of a budget that voters actively participated in. You took that away from us before the voters decided. But now we said it clear, put it back, and then let the voters decide. And if you all think our town is turning a corner and want to show the Board of Ed that we want to be on the same path as surrounding towns, then let's start where the surrounding towns start. Rally your supporters to come out on May 10, pass the budget, and then start the real work.
Good evening. Laura Colvin, Kefron Lane. And I just want to preface this by saying, I wrote this before I heard Val's support, Bev's, what they were commenting. So some of this is repetitive, but I think very worthwhile. So. As a parent to students, my last year when I'm about to graduate, I know the education system and budget process well. Thank you, Chris Bisante and Carrie Young, for supporting the education. For those members of the Town Council and Clinton community who have challenged the Clinton Public Schools administration staffing, the facts do not support cuts. Superintendent O'Donnell's shared administrative roles have grown significantly. Excuse me, 125 statutory mandates have been added or amended since 2015. This requires significant manpower. And I want to add something that's been very personal to me that I've been involved with as there's been challenging to about administrative roles. Mr. Fennigley plays a critical role as assistant superintendent. In addition to being in charge of curriculum, he has undertaken a huge and exciting advanced manufacturing initiative in partnership with the EDC, Clinton Manufacturing Coalition, and Goodwin University to develop necessary skills for both college-bound and the students who would go directly into the workplace. Thanks to Mr. Fennigley, CPS was awarded significant Perkins grant money to cover the expenses. The plan is for this model to be expanded to other high-demand careers in Connecticut in healthcare, education, and hospitality. Any cuts could jeopardize this unique and important initiative. I might have had more respect for the Town Council's decision had there been a basis for the $350,000 cut other than the fact, as Val and others have alluded to, that Mrs. O'Donnell's commitment to transparency and budgeting. Clinton Public Schools is returning unused funds to the town. After all the work that was put into developing the budget, few questions were asked of the education ownership. Given the unassigned fund balance is 7.8 million over the 50% target, or I heard five million tonight, I can understand some of that being allocated to capital. In my opinion, there's no justification for cutting education. I respectfully ask you to reinstate the 200,000, actually, I respectfully ask you to reinstate the $350,000 to the education budget. And finally, I want to reiterate what Bev said. I encourage every Town Council member to get into the schools and attend Board of Ed meetings to get a true understanding and appreciation of the heart of the guys, not only into the budget, but how hard every staff member is working to meet the needs of Clinton students. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Testman, 8 Sunset Lane. Again, longtime resident of Clinton. I went through the Clinton Public School systems, and I have three children, two have been through it, what was going down. For the Town Council and Clinton communities who challenge the Clinton Public School administration staff, just want to give you some data. I'm from EdSite. Clinton has fewer administrative staff per pupil in line with the other towns. For example, at high school, Clinton has 267 students per admin, when Lionel Line has 222 and Old St. Brook has 180. I respectfully ask the U to reinstate the $350,000 to education budget.
Hi, Katherine Stone, 122 Pratt Road. I don't have much of a voice, but I'll try. I just want to respectfully request that they do add the money back into the budget. I'm on the Board of Ed. We've worked really hard to get that number down, and it unfortunately required lots of cuts and things that people apparently were upset about. And, but it was a responsible budget, and it seemed right-sized with what we were directed to. Any more cuts will really millipack students. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of chatter out there that we have to be administrators, that we don't need an assistant superintendent. But I think if you really look into the roles that administrators do, before I came on the Board of Ed, I would have said the same thing. I felt like assistant superintendent actually assists superintendent. But that's really not true at all. They actually have two completely different roles. And one manages all the curriculum of all grades and all the programs in all the schools. And the other one manages a staff of about 300 people. And that requires a lot of work and a lot of manpower to get that done. And that we're not overstacked, if that's fact of anything, as people are saying, we're really understaffed. And I've learned that during my time on being on the Board of Ed. And so I request that you just go back to what we did do, what the town asked us to do, and then reinstate those funds. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Heather Moore, 123 Clintwood Road. Trying to try not to talk about the same things I've already been spoken about. I did also write a letter to the Town Council that hopefully you have read as well. I just want to, I think one of the things that's most discouraging, that got me most upset, was that this money was cut. Again, we both mentioned, number one, even though the Board of Ed made their increase that they were requesting right on target with what you had in the directive of. That's really frustrating. But second, that the amount was, the money was cut before you even heard from any of us, from the town. There's a public hearing for a reason. And while you may have the authority and you may have the ability to make cuts prior to that, it just doesn't make any sense. I bet mostly these people would prefer to be home tonight having dinner, spending time with their family. But we're all out here because you took money away before anyone even heard from us. So here we are. We all came out and we're fired up. So obviously, I'm here to support the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed's original request. And from what we're hearing, maybe if the town budget, which I also support, is asking for 7%, why can't the Board of Ed? Why can't they use some money for all these things that these parents are telling you are lacking in our schools? Right now, from January 22 to January 23, the inflation rate went up 6.4%. We're all feeling it in our pocketbooks, in our home budgets. And the Board of Ed came in with a 2.5% right of your directive, and it was cut before you even heard from any of us. It's so frustrating. So please, not, oh, and the other thing I wanted to mention was, anyone that's been on social media, it's been horrific for everybody. Not one of those people have come up to speak tonight. And I would love to hear from them to find out what is going on. Not one of them showed up to speak in support of cutting more, cutting more, cutting more. And in the social media comments, I want to, some people have mentioned about raises or money going to administrators, or do we even need this many administrators? I for one can tell you, Mary Ann O'Donnell and her team, what they did during COVID would make your head spin. The decisions they had to make on a dime every time something new happened, they figured it out. And we're giving them trouble for getting a raise when right now there's 6.4% inflation. If they are to leave to go to another town because they're sick of what Clinton keeps doing, I will be devastated as a parent in town. So give them back, please, the 350, but maybe we need more.
Emily Roy.
I have no voice because I'm sick, so. My name is Emily. I'm going to start with whatever before I came here, but all the ones you guys made tonight are very interesting. I'm winded too because I'm sick, so. I have to pause. Sorry. Overall, this is obviously kind of sad tonight. Parents and teachers are desperate and we're raging at the Town Council. But if there's one thing to say about Town Council, is that they have no say on the Board of Education's budget as far as what is or is not cut. They can't give advice and they can't make suggestions. So even if they agree that we need certain things that we're not getting, they're not in a position where the board, where they can tell the Board of Education where to cut in line. The first problem is there's obviously a massive disconnect. For someone who doesn't understand the budget or doesn't know how to read the budget, initially, we would think that this $350,000 is going to bring back the resources and bring back the teachers that we need to function. But it isn't the Town Council that cut the teachers and the resources and materials that teachers need, unless we do maybe need more. I don't know. The misinformation between the Board of Education and the town residents is also concerning. I had a board member message me and tell me that my numbers were incorrect and that I was spreading misinformation and that my speaking was not helpful. Additionally, they mentioned that they didn't understand where I came up with the number $2.3 million. I shouldn't have to explain to board members where the number 2.3 million came from. That 2.3 million is the number that is calculated when you add the budget from 2021, 2022, and 2023, if their initial budget was approved this year. That would have been $2.3 million in a three-year period. I was explaining that this Town Council, I was explaining that had Town Council approved this year's initial $830,000 budget for 2023, then we would have given the Board of Education $2.3 million in a three-year period. And let me explain that I'm okay with that. Like increase as much as you need to fund the schools. But my issue is not the dollar amount of the budget or the increase in taxes. My issue is how that money was being used and not understanding why, as the number increased, that we were still looking at materials and resources being cut right off the bat and more teachers being cut, and I didn't understand that. We have 14 students. Mary Ann O'Donnell said that due to the decline, we could afford the cuts of these 5.2 teachers. Even with the decline in overall student enrollment in the district, there was only a nine-student decline at Elliott, which is hardly a valid reason to cut five core teachers out of Elliott alone right off the bat. My issue is not the monetary number. I would give the Board of Education every dollar and any, and anyone, if anyone deserves our money in this town, it's our children. My issue is not the dollar amount. My issue is that we need to pause, and we're not making any progress over the years. We are not progressing. We are regressing. When I look back at the public school system's budget, they have things in place for years at a time, but they chip away at little by little, so their budget continues to take steps towards success and implementing positive changes in their school district, one big step at a time. For example, their safety plan is structured- For example, their safety plan is stretched out over a 15-year period, and every year $75,000 of their budget goes towards that safety plan. They're accomplishing large goals over small increments of the timeline, whereas we're not getting anywhere more as we move forward and our budget continues to increase, we are actually losing the most important core of our school system and that's our teachers. Why we are just handing money to the Board of Education when we don't even know where we're going or what it's doing, and all I know is that we're losing teachers and losing things that we care most about. When I look at the budget, I just want parents to understand, even with the $350,000, we're not getting back anything that we care about. Even with $350,000, we're already losing those 5.2 teachers and they're not coming back. Another example is at Joel Elementary, their activities budget has already been completely eliminated. Transportation gone, and even with that $350,000, it's not coming back. So when we're asking why we don't have activities and their response is to blame the budget, I want these parents to understand that those things are already gone and they've been gone months before we've been presented with any of this. This is a reflection of the Board of Education far before they even presented their budget to Town Council. That is where the Board of Education is cutting first, directly from the kids and directly from the teachers, and I have a problem with that. That's why I went back 11 years into our budget, to reevaluate what successes we have achieved. Then I projected a few years to see where we're going, and all I can see is that salaries are increasing, those salaries come directly at the expense of teachers and school activities, and there's no excuse for when we are already, we're not making any progress over the years. So what is the value in those salaries? It's not the number, it's the value it holds. I know everyone worked hard, but I question, but I question the value of those who hold the highest positions if they're worth the monetary value of our budget. I don't doubt that the Board of Education and Marianne O'Donnell didn't work hard, I know that they did. And I'm not saying that they're bad people or that they don't care, but what I'm saying is that their salary increases for every year, their salaries increase as our enrollment decreases, and there are things we care most about that are being eliminated. So where is the disconnect? I would much rather have those 5.2 teachers back for our students and activities for our students, and an opportunity to rebuild a stronger foundation if we don't have the right people in the right positions, but I don't have the answers to that. I think it's clear where I stand as far as what needs to change, and that starts at the top of the highest paid salaries in our administration department, and parents being more involved in open dialogue and more involved in the oversight of what's going on. I'll vote yes, for it, if that $350,000 is going to touch another teacher, that is certainly not worth it. Consider this year a wash and give back what the Board of Education needs to slide through this year without touching another teacher, but it's clearly time that as the town starts taking responsibility as a goal and stop assuming that Town Council's fully to blame without equally holding the Board of Education just accountable, because regardless of this $350,000, we are getting those teachers and resources back. Accountability used to be held everywhere, and we should be concerned that we're told, due to the trend of de-gradates in student enrollment, it was not a concern to let go of 5.2 teachers, when those 5.2 teachers were mostly let go in one school where there's only a nine-student number decline. Obviously, they know that they need, but moving forward, we're clearly in trouble, and there are many of you out here who have made strong and educated points, and I suggest we use this as a lesson in disguise and learn how to better work together so we can be more successful in the future. Thank you.
So I was looking at the Old Saybrook proposed budget, and I looked at their budget presentation because I feel like they're kind of a close comparison for Clinton. And not only do they have superintendent and an assistant superintendent, they have a principal and an assistant principal at each of their schools, even though their enrollment is lower than ours. And they had a comparison on one slide where they showed the cost for pupil, and guess which one was fifth out of five? Clinton. So when parents are coming in looking to buy a home somewhere, do you think they're going to go for the place that spends the least and who maybe doesn't value public education? Or are they looking for people who spend a little more? And also something I saw there, assets in the community, and that's such a true thing. Your public schools are a huge struggle for new families, and if we want to keep our community growing, and if we want it to be diverse, the schools are the place to start. And so I'm respectfully asking that you return the $350,000. Thank you.
Good evening, I am 7th Grove Street, I'm employed by the Board of Ed, I teach at Jared Elliott Middle School, I'm a lifelong resident of Clinton, and I've raised two children who went through public schools, as did my entire family. I respectfully request that you put the money back into the budget and let the voters decide. I am very worried where we would get $350,000 more out of the budget if we were to cut that. As it is, we've lost a lot of our teachers at the middle school, I'll be absorbing a lot of those kids next year with the same resources I have now. I worry about student mental health, I worry about their test scores, I worry about them having enough food, I worry about everything that happens to them. And I will have 35 more kids to worry about next year. I can't imagine what would happen if you take an additional $350,000 out of the budget. Would it come from capital things? Can we afford to put off septic treatment for another year? Or any needy roofs? Or anything else that's happening in the schools? You can't put things off indefinitely, and this does not seem to be a year when inflation is quite high where we can afford to put anything else off. I respectfully ask that you leave $350,000 in the budget and let voters decide. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Last call.
Hello, Moore. Hi. My name is Monique Hunter, I don't know if I need a microphone or not, can you hear me in the back? I usually have a nice voice, okay? So I am the interim PTA president, do I need it? I do?
Yeah.
I'm usually a big mouth, you guys. I'm the interim PTA president, and the PTA has worked very hard to try to get more folks here, so I'm so very glad that everybody decided to come, we have a great showing, I wish more folks came, but it's kind of an awkward time. But what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to see, for the folks that are here and would like to see the budget reinstated, could you keep standing so that they can see a visual? These are your voters, these are all your voters, and there's more that couldn't make it. So can we please reinstate the budget for our kids? Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none, then we can look for a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
Oh.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. We will now move on to item number four, which is to call the order of the Town Council's special meeting. You got it. All right, we'll take a 10-minute break?
Yeah.
10-minute break, we'll be back at 7:30.
Agenda item number four is to call the Town Council's special meeting to order and immediately move on to item number five, which is to discuss and take possible action on the budget.
I'd like to speak and thank everybody for all their comments, I'd like to echo Peter and his point that, appreciate everybody's participation in the democratic process, you ought to be proud of yourselves and I'm proud of Clinton to be part of this process. You also made a compelling case, excellent arguments, and I'd like to make a motion to reinstate $200,000 into the budget for BOE.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Let's go.
That's for the Board of Ed, we'll talk town in a minute, right?
Hey, do you think anybody wants to talk town? Aren't you guys here for the town budget? No? It's not tonight?
Mary Beth is. So I think we have a motion.
It's on the floor for to put back 200, which, just so people are aware, it was a health, it was a health cost savings.
Are we on discussion though, right now?
Yes, discussion, right now.
Okay, because as soon as we pass this, then the thing's over, right? We all leave the door.
No.
No, we got to do town first.
You need to talk about the town budget as well.
Okay, because I do have just a couple of statements that sort of bothers me. So, and I just want to clarify a couple of things, people mentioned Saybrook, they got all these increases and whatever, and blah, 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 blah. Saybrook's Board of Education budget is 28 million, the Town of Clinton's is almost 38. So let's make that little, are we, what I'm trying to say is, folks, in a nice way is, we do support education in this town, we've always supported education in this town. In the last four to five years, we haven't cut one penny from that Board of Ed. Most of the time when they've made cuts, Marianne or somebody has come forward and found someplace where they can help us. We as a board have not cut it, but yet you come in here, we don't support education. I take a fir-, you know, I was coming in here tonight thinking that I was going to come right in and give you back your $200,000, but I got a little aggravated by all you people just persecuting this crew for doing our job. We don't like it either, you know, and the other, you know, I don't like sitting up here and having to worry about individuals losing their jobs or anything else. But I'll tell you one thing, I've never made a decision, and I don't think anybody else on this panel's ever made a decision, just to hurt any department in this town. Never have, never will. That's always been my thing, and I've always been with the youth, and people like Jack and everybody else know me, I've been involved with the youth of this town, I've been in this town for 56 years. Two of my sons went to the school, my granddaughters went to all these schools. I have no problem with the Board of Education, they do their job, we do our job. So don't come up here every year. You know, once in a while, I would like to see somebody just say after it's all over, hey, nice job, Town Council, you did a good job. You don't hear that. All we hear every year is, oh, they're the bad guys, they're the bad guys. So I'm sorry, I'm a little upset, like everybody else, and somebody said you can be passionate about it, I'm passionate about it. But I get personally attacked that I don't care about board or the kids in this town, I take offense to that. And I would almost like to say that I wouldn't vote against this thing, but I realize the fact that there are some good benefits in that. And that's another thing, I just get this off my chest, you know, I can get one shot at this for the whole year. Why do some of you people continue, kept asking for 350? They need 200,000 to behold. 200,000, not 350. It's very evident.
Some people didn't know that.
Of course you didn't, folks, come on, it's been around, all around.
Bow, 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 bow.
But anyways, okay, I'm not, if you didn't know, I'm sorry, I apologize. But if almost everybody else around town knew the fact because we had facts to us, okay, we won't believe the deal. You have a, you have a discussion on the floor?
I'd like to add to Dennis's comments. The comments I heard tonight regarding the pay structure for the paraprofessionals, you have to be in the school to know what's going on in the school, we, the lack of coverage that administrators are covering certain departments, that to me is the Board of Education's responsibility and the administrators of the Board of, the administrators of the school system's responsibility. None of that has anything to do with the Town Council, and for you to stand there and berate us thinking that that is the case is absolutely wrong. And like Dennis said, we have never cut a dollar from the requested increase of the Board of Education, which is why the budget has gone up $2 million in two years despite the fact that next year there are going to be 70 fewer students. The administration remains the same, they added a guidance counselor very recently despite the decrease in the hospital, in the size of the high school. I mean, there are still personnel being added despite the, and I understand, we're all recovering from COVID, there are needs that exist today that didn't exist, but we have covered, the Town Council did not cut any of those expenses that the Board, that the Board of Education put into this budget. We did not do that. What we're asking for is a little rationality. It's a $38 million budget, we're asking for $350,000, of which maybe $200,000 now is negotiable. And to compare that $38 million budget to what the town gets is just a laughable argument. The town budget provides you with this building, your roads, your police department, your fire department, your everything that you enjoy here, public works, the beaches, the woods, everything comes from that other half of the budget. Do you have any idea how strictly structured the departments are in this town? There's one department head, one clerk, that clerk covers everything, that department head covers everything. There is no extra at all. We're not adding any employees to the town side of the budget. So please keep in mind, when you're thinking that you're cutting corners and being strictly governed in the Board of Education, you don't have a clue of what goes on in the town side of the budget. You want to talk about strictly monitored?
All right, Carol.
All right, okay.
Does a motion on the floor?
We're here, we're here.
Well, I just want them to know both sides of the story.
I understand, I understand, I understand. The discussion is about the education budget.
So what is the motion again, please?
Motion is to reinstate $200,000 to the Board of Education budget.
Do you have a second today?
Yes, there's a second on the floor, we're in discussion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
And once again, they get everything they want. Just please remember that, next year.
Pass this. So the final, Carol, 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 please, Carol.
They get everything they want.
And we move on.
I go with Dennis.
Can we move on to the town budget now?
Yep.
Carl, I wanted to make sure that, you know, the cost savings in the medical plan on the town side was 62,000?
Here's the cuts on the town side.
Oh, good.
So the town, as I communicated to the Town Council before, workers' comp program that the Board of Ed and the town uses, as well as the healthcare program the town and the Board of Ed uses, came in, it looks like there's reductions that could take place to both workers' comp and healthcare. There are cuts that I'm putting forward on the town side, the 150,000 you already know about, and you already know that the reduction in workers' comp to the Board of Ed needs to stay within the Board of Ed budget to respond to an overage in a pension program. So the town cuts is 10,000 to the workers' comp line item and 52,000 to the healthcare insurance line item for a $62,000 reduction off of the town side of the budget.
You had talked about 395,000 in cuts before, right? On the capital side?
You've already taken that.
That's already done, okay. Just wanted to be sure.
You already did that for this version of the budget that went into this public hearing.
Very good, thanks.
I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the town budget by 62,000 specifically for workers' comp and health insurance.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Just another thought.
Yeah?
Carl, we also got bad news about the pension funds, the quarterly reports, is that going to affect the police pension increase, is that still in line?
Pension numbers that are in the budget as it sits now is responsive to market fluctuations for both the police pension plan and the state municipal employee plan, so both of those had increases passed through to us to fund, and before we went into this version of the budget, you increased the MERS line, which was responsive to that program.
Right.
The police pension increase was already baked into the budget that I presented you with.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Both of those are already in this budget.
Okay. So Carl, can I ask you a question? So we voted to reinstate the 200,000, and, but that is, so that can't come out of the undesignated fund, that's operating budget. So do we, do we have to, do we have to make another motion to take the 200,000 and put it towards capital projects? If we want to...
So trying to put together some math in the break, you need to put an additional $283,000 in undesignated fund balance into the budget as a revenue in order to get to a zero, 0% increase on the mill rate. And then the next step for identifying additional projects, when I've done this in the past, I've tried to focus on projects where the one-time money will have a long life and not on things that are essentially maintenance or short-term transitory investments. So trying to get to backfilling that 283, it would be funding the full fire department apparatus reserve out of fund balance. So that's an additional 141,000 comes out of taxation and goes into fund balance. There's a mower for the public works department. That's 16,000 goes out of taxation and goes into fund balance. General repairs for the town goes 40,000 out of taxation and goes into fund balance. Board of Ed, there's a fencing project at 12,000 that goes out of taxation and that goes into fund balance. Then that kind of penetrates through the layer of stuff that has a longer life, and then the short-term stuff. So on the short-term stuff, network security for the Board of Ed, 22,000 moves out of taxation and into fund balance. Network security for the town, 17,887 moves from taxation into fund balance. Public work Wi-Fi at 3,574 moves out of taxation, moves into fund balance. And then the police vehicles would be split with 30,539 moving into fund balance, leaving a balance of 144,461 to be paid for out of taxation. That gets you the additional 283 in undesignated fund balance being spent. That gets you to a zero mill rate.
So I'd like to make that motion to take 283,000 out of undesignated fund and allocate it on the projects that Carl just mentioned.
I second.
Discussion?
I would oppose that only because we have some major projects in the near future that we will need that surplus. And I don't necessarily feel that we should nip and tuck these things and basically get rid of that based on smaller capital items. The increase that's projected now is certainly within reason. And to keep it at zero, simply by taking away our rainy day fund even that much more, knowing full well that we have a fire department that we have to look at, we have fire engines that we have to look at, we have a sewer system that we have to look at, I don't see where we should start to use that fund for smaller items.
Carl, doesn't this still leave us with just short of 4 million in the surplus?
You gotta remember that that percentage has to do with spending, whether we use the fund balance or taxes. Not only do you decrease that fund balance, but you increase spending.
So you need to, so if your budget spending goes up next year by a million dollars, then your fund balance has to go up by 15% of that, 150 grand?
To keep it--
Correct.
Right.
But we have millions in there.
As your budget rises, so is your 15%.
When was the last time you saw a budget go down? When did we have a budget decrease?
Our fund balance, this--
Never did.
Our fund balance went from 4.5 million last year to 7.78 this year.
I understand all that. I'm just saying, when did you see a budget go down?
And you understand where that money came from? It wasn't from the Morgan. It was not from the Morgan. Morgan was sold in '21.
So the last couple of years, we had 1.5 million conservatively that's not related to one-time deposits, and another, this year, the last year, 3.3 million. So I'm not, I think, Tom, you make some good points, that you don't spend it willy-nilly, but $180,000, when we have that amount of surplus, with the opportunity to keep the mill rate flat, I think is something that we really need to do. I don't understand, I don't think we should increase taxes in, when we have a situation like we do with such a large surplus, over 15%, the growth that we've had and the potential growth again this year.
I agree with a lot you're saying, Chris, but just, let me just say this one thing. Sooner or later, taxes are going to go up. I mean--
Later's better.
It's next year.
Later's better.
What?
Later's better.
Later's better, all the time. I understand that.
Really?
And we've been saying that for a long time. But sooner or later, Peter has to pay for it. I mean, you know?
And I--
I mean, so I just want the people to know that. I mean, you know, we can't indefinitely live on this undesignated fund.
Yeah. And I agree with that. Like, I don't, I never come into the budget, just so happens the last two years that I've talked about that. But I didn't come into the budget saying we need to keep the mill rate constant. It's more come in, take all the factors that we have out there, and we're so close with such a major surplus in a tough year with, like, people have referenced all those people in line. So 183,000, I'm not saying, you know, 1.8 million in addition, you know? I know we've already have money in there, but we're so close to keep the mill rate constant this year just seems to make sense to me. So, but I do hear what you're saying. Like, I'm not just saying that should be--
I just hope you remember that next year.
--a target every year.
Because eventually, as Chris said, Chris Anderson Scouva said, sooner or later, we have to start paying our way. We have to start having our budget pay, and there'll have to be increases sooner or later.
As a council, we should work hard to improve upon our town, improve upon our schools, improve upon what we have so we grow our grand list.
I agree with you 100%, but, you know--
It's a part of our job. It's a part of our job.
It's part of my job, but it's also part of a job if you don't have the economic development going there, which really the town council doesn't have a direct effect on. Our Economic Development Commission has to go out and try to get industries or stores to come into our town so that we, I agree with you. The tax base should go up all the time. Hopefully, you know, Route 81 there, Indian Landing, that will start adding better revenues. But, and I agree with you 100%, but there's, 56 years I've been here. This is a very unique town. We don't have all the area and land and expanse to put things like on our main street like other towns can. We're stuck between a railroad track and a harbor. You know, we're limited. And I think DDC or, you know, whatever, we have to go out there. I agree with you. I agree with that. I don't disagree with anything that's being said. Just remember that we can't always say this is a bad year. We've been saying it now for three to four years. And it has been. It has been three, four years. But sooner or later, we're going to have to have a slight increase, Chris.
Yeah.
And like Chris says, rather than coming in and have a big increase of three to four or five, you know what I'm trying to say, mill rate, all of a sudden, the people are going to go, you know, they're going to get mad if we eat the elephant a bite at a time.
I think, I do agree that we shouldn't go into the budget season saying our goal is to have the mill rate flat. I don't think that should be our goal.
Okay.
But where we sit right now, at this moment, when we're so close, in the environment that we're in, I just feel like 183,000--
I'll probably back you this time, one more time.
One of these times.
One more time, I'll go to--
I mean, eventually--
I'll go to the wall with you.
Eventually, we're going to get to that point where you can't do it.
Exactly.
And that's what I struggle with. And like you say, you know, later's better. I struggle with later's better. You know, I'm not worried about necessarily what we're going to do this year. I mean, yes, you want to help the people, yes, you want to do other things, but for the town itself, we need to look at a broader base. We need to look at five years down the road because that's what we're going to look at. We are very limited. Our tax base is residential. That's what we have here in town. And quite honestly, I like it. That's why I live here. It's a small town. That's why you like it that way. To think that we're going to grow the town a certain way is sort of unrealistic because we don't have control over that. You know, Unilever luckily sold, so now they can develop that. You know, we have Big Y Plazas, you know, that was developed. So those are things that we're, I hate to bring it up, the pickleball thing, same problem. We don't have land that we own as a town that we can say, "We're going to do that on that piece of land." So we're limited in what we can do as a town. So the struggle for me personally is that you're going to get to that point where, you know, that zero gets to be, you know, in one given year, 5%. And then we're going to be going back telling people, "Oh, by the way, hey, we gave you, we gave you four zeros in a row. Well, now we're up 5%." And the issue is, is we want to fund these things. We want to fund projects. People talk about senior centers. They talk about activities in town. All that leads to is a higher tax rate. And then, so that's the struggle in education, want to give them the money to do what they need to do, right? But at the end of the day, that leads to higher taxes. So it's, you have to weigh that option. So a small bite's a little bit better than a big bite. You know what I mean? Yes, this year it is a small number, but we also previously put in 1.8--
3 million.
3 million, right, for the total of, I mean, so it's a lot of money that we're spending and we're putting in an outlay. So that's, you know, and I just, people hopefully will understand that. And going forward, you know, you know, we want to support the education. We want to support that. That is a big part of your town. That's why people have moved to towns. But offset by that, if our taxes are going to be through the roof, people are not going to be able, younger families aren't going to be able to afford to move here. So you have to kind of understand all that as we go into this. So I mean, I think, you know, like we said, we've, we're doing what we can because people are struggling and everybody sees it. I mean, you can't come here tonight and not see how many people are lined up at the church. You can't. You know, it's a slap in the face because you see it. It's there, it's live. You know what people are struggling with. But we just have to make sure as a council, as we go forward, that we obviously, hopefully look at things and understand, you know, a little bit at a time will help ease the pain.
Just before, I know Carl's got his busy, his fingers going busy there. If we didn't do this, Carl, can you give us an idea, after we added the 200,000 back in, just what our tax rate, were you doing that or no?
No, but-- He is now. I will, I will do it now.
Just what the increase would be?
Just to remind, in '21, the council, I was not here then, spent the surplus down to 80,000. If it's irresponsible, you did it two years ago. I sent you the email.
To your question, Dennis, if you don't put the additional 283,000 in, the mill rate would come in at 30 mills, which is an increase of 0.17 mills or 0.55%.
So it's .17 is the delta?
If we didn't take the 28--
.17 equals 283,000.
Anybody else?
That's a lot to answer.
Discussion? Motion's on the floor. Anybody else have anything to say? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, passes for two. Okay. So these are final, right? Do you have--
That's fine.
Just a final. All right, right now, we will then go to item number six, which is to recommend town and Board of Education budgets for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, and send a referendum on May 10, 2023. So the suggested motion would be the town council of the town of Clinton hereby recommends to the annual town meeting on May 3, 2020-- no. May 3?
May 10?
Yes, the town meeting. Town meeting, okay. So the town council of the town of Clinton hereby recommends to the annual town meeting on May 3, 2023, town government budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023, June 30, 2024, in the amount of 23,376,078, and adjourn to referendum on May 10, 2023. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And again, the town council of the town of Clinton hereby recommends to the annual town meeting on May 3, 2023, an education budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, in the amount of 38,772,877, and adjourn to referendum on May 10, 2023. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?